Okay. Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to today's Thursday, October 3rd, meeting of the Missoula Board of County Commissioners. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Any announcements from staff today? Okay, we will move right on. Just a point of housekeeping, if folks have not done so already, please sign in on the sign-in sheet at the back of the room, and you can do that on your way out if you would like, that would just help us track who is here and how to spell your last names for the record. Is there any public comment on items not on today's agenda? Your opportunity to comment on anything you would like that's not on the agenda. Okay, see none. Our current claims list, this is claims received as of August 29th, 2019, through September 25th, 2019, by the Commissioner's Office, total $6,754,557.22. We have a whole collection of public hearings today, some of which will undoubtedly take longer than others. We're going to swap things up just a little bit to accommodate staff schedule and presenting. So, we're going to begin with Item E, which is a resolution establishing Justice Court as a Court of Record. And I'd like to open the public hearing and turn it over to Chris Lonsberry for a staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner Sturlemeyer. So, as the Commission is aware, during the last two years, the county has been looking at transitioning Justice Court to being a Court of Record. And for those who might not know, currently proceedings in Justice Court are not recorded, nor are they transcribed. And so, while there are notes taken during the meetings, there's not an actual record. And what that means is that should there be a question about a case, or should a case be appealed, that when it goes to District Court, it actually ends up being an entirely new trial that happens, for which there's a fancy Latin term, which I'm going to not pronounce well, called de novo. Looks like I did okay. And so, this change will actually allow there to be a record of those proceedings. Over the last two years, the county in each of its fiscal budgets, and again in fiscal year, the fiscal year '20 budget that was recently adopted, we have been putting aside money to upgrade the equipment in Justice Court to allow us to make this transition. And that work is now largely complete. And so, the county is looking to make this change beginning January 1st. And the reason we're doing that is twofold. One is to allow the rest of the equipment and staff training to occur, and the other piece is to make sure that we provide adequate notice to all those who might bring cases in Justice Court, that this change will be occurring beginning on that January 1st date. And so, under the Montana Code, and any of the resolution under Montana Code annotated 310-101 subsection 5, it says that a county may establish Justice Court as a Court of Record. If the Justice Court's established under a Court of Record, it must be known as Justice Court of Record. And in addition to that, the proceedings have to be recorded by electronic recording or stenographic transcription, and the county is looking towards electronic recording. Just a little bit of information about Justice Court. It is a very busy court. As you can imagine, in Montana, in Missoula, there's about 14,000 cases each year filed in Justice Court. To give you some comparison, in Yellowstone County, it's about 17,000, in Flathead about 12, and in Gallatin County about 9,000. So, it's a very busy court that's occurring here. Of all those cases that get heard in Justice Court, about 20 to 25 of them each year get appealed to District Court. And so, it's a small number of cases that actually get appealed, but it is a large caseload that Justice Court carries. And so, this recording has benefits across, not just those that get appealed, but across a great number of cases that impact Missoula County and its citizenry. So, with that, what we're asking for is permission to go ahead and have the Commission sign a resolution that will establish Justice Court as a Court of Record beginning on January 1st. With the adoption of that resolution, staff has a communications plan in place to go out and help to notify folks who might be filing there, as well as doing some postings in the courthouse. We have materials ready to be sent out to the partners that we work with, the County Attorney's Office, Public Defender's Office, private law firms here in town, to make sure that we get that notice out as far and wide as we can for folks.
Thank you very much. To kick things off, would either of our Justice Court judges want to say anything? Yeah, come on up to the microphone and hit the button to turn the light green, and it's all yours, Judge Holloway.
I'm Landy Holloway, one of the justices of the pieces. I am in support of this resolution, and I do believe that it will bring a bit more of transparency and efficiency to the court with the cases that we do see. There's quite a bit of handwritten notes that we take, and we hope that we're capturing all of the information, along with what the clerks are taking, taking their notes. And so, with a bit more of accuracy, I think that we become that better, efficient people's court that we want to be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Judge Beal.
Thank you. I'm Alex Beal, the other justice of the piece, and I also support this proposal. I second everything that Judge Holloway said. In addition to that, the number of appeals there are each year, it's relatively small in comparison to the total number of cases. But every one of those appeals is somebody's fight, is somebody's life. And unfortunately, a lot of those are criminal cases, and people come in to testify in one of those cases, that can be a really difficult and traumatic moment. And if even one of those people doesn't have to go through that process a second time on appeal, I think we've done a great thing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other comment on this resolution? County Attorney Papst.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I won't keep my comments brief, but I wanted to let you know that the County Attorney's Office is strongly in favor of this resolution. 25 appeals may not sound like much, but that's 25 days of trial time, and each day of trial time takes several days of prep time. So, it's a significant burden on our office, and we believe that if this resolution is passed, it will provide a record and increase transparency, like Judge Holloway mentioned. It will promote accountability for all the parties involved, including the courts and the attorneys and the defendants as well. It will reduce our number of appeals, and it will save the county money in the long run. So, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any additional public comment on the resolution to establish Justice Court as a Court of Record? Okay, see none. I will close the public hearing. Discussion, questions? I guess I would just like to chime in and recognize and give thanks to the prior Commissions and Commissioners who played a role in getting us to this point. It's been a long process. A lot of thought has gone into this, both from a technical standpoint and a procedural standpoint. So, a big thanks to everyone who helped play a role getting us to where we are today. I think we're ready for a motion.
I move that Justice Court become a Court of Record.
Okay, that motion is in order to adopt the resolution. I will second that. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay. And so it is, January 1st. Thank you very much. Okay, our next public hearing, which I'll open, is related to petitions for annexation into the Missoula Rural Fire District. And we will begin with a staff report from Sam Scott with the Clerk and Recorder's Office.
So, I'm Sam Scott with the Clerk and Recorder. A petition to annex land into the Missoula Rural Fire District has been submitted to our office. The land proposed to be annexed is Lot 3 of Painted Sky Phase 2, located in Section 15, Township 11 North Range 20 West, Missoula County. Parcel ID is 3726203, located at 16800 Painted Sky Court in Florence, 59833. The petition has been signed by the property owners, representing more than 40% of the acreage and 40% of the taxable value of the property to be annexed. A notice of hearing has been published twice in the Missoulian, and we are presenting the petition for your decision.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Any comment on the petition for annexation into the Missoula Rural Fire District? See none. I will close the public hearing. Questions? Josh? Is there anyone from the Fire District? There is not, and Sam, just reaffirm, they were in support of this?
Yeah, their letter of approval and acceptance was submitted with the petition.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
I would move that we approve the petition.
I'll second that. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor? Aye. Okay. Thanks, Sam. So, our next item is a request that the Board of County Commissioners approve a petition to alter the right-of-way known as Six Mile Road, and we will begin with a staff report from County Surveyor Steve Nyde.
Yes, Commissioner, Steve Nyde, Surveyor's Office. Let's see, where do we begin? There was a significant road slide a couple of years ago that kind of prompted this petition. The land on, the highlighted land there in the map, was owned by Jim Richardson, more recently purchased by Montana's Department of Transportation. And in designing a new road alignment to fix the problem, it was determined that the existing right-of-way does not really fit the physical road by a long ways. There is also an 1883 petition that went up this valley, not where the road is today, but closer to the stream. So, to fix this disparity between the record right-of-way and where the road is, and where the road needs to be for the repairs, we've suggested that an alteration of the right-of-way take place. The county doesn't bring road petitions for itself, so we enlisted the one private landowner affected on the east side of the road, the Washburns, and they were very helpful in carrying the petition, acquiring the signatures, and having the petition recorded. So, basically, we're just taking an old, old right-of-way that's not been used for a long time, and a newer circa 1960-deeded right-of-way that doesn't fit the physical road, and combining them into one good right-of-way that does fit the new alignment. That's it in a nutshell.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a question?
Was it the slide that you mentioned that precipitated this?
Yes, the downhill or westerly side, there was a portion of the pavement actually slid away, and was necked down to one lane for several months. So, there's been a temporary fix done that will hold us over until next year, when the full reconstruction will take place.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there any public comment on the petition related to Six Mile Road?
Before we do that, we should just put on record that the right-of-way to be altered is that portion of Six Mile Road, beginning at the northerly right-of-way of Interstate 90, and ending at the north line of Section 23, located in the northwest quarter of Section 26, Township 15 North Range 22 West. A notice of hearing has been published twice in the Missoulian. The petition was signed by 10 freeholders of the district, and all affected landowners have been contacted.
Excellent. My apologies for skipping over your staff report. Okay. So, we will leave the public hearing open. We typically, in these cases, go out and do a road viewing, and then reassemble here for the final public hearing to take action on the item. Emmy, when might we schedule both the road viewing and also the public hearing?
The public hearing would be November 7th at 2:00 PM, same place, and the road viewing would be October 22nd, which is a Tuesday, from 12 to 2, it sounded like was.
On the 10th, even the morning?
Okay, we're just doing a quick check here to make sure we'll have a quorum. I think we're good. Okay. So, if folks have an interest in this, please feel free to join us back here on November 7th for the public hearing. I think we already scheduled that. Yeah, I'll do it unless you really want to.
I think Dave.
Okay, I'm next at bat, so I'll do the road viewing. Okay, next, in our order, we will have a continuation of a public hearing that is already open on Pineview Drive, road petition. This is a request to approve a petition to establish a right-of-way over Pineview Drive. And Sam, do you have anything else you want to add to this? Or Steve, or Ms. Curtis?
Good afternoon. For the record, I'm Jean Curtis, District Manager for the Sioux Lake Sewer District, and it's Pine Drive. We don't want to say Pineview Drive, I think that might be a rattlesnake. I sent you a memo recently to inform you of where we were in coming to an agreement with the property owners on fair compensation for the public easement on their lot in Sioux Lake, so I won't repeat what is already part of the record. I know that the Commission was also copied on the letter from their attorney, Zane Sullivan, that was sent to me yesterday, or Tuesday, I guess. The property owners do not agree with the amended appraisal that assumes a 60-year prescriptive right by the adjoining lots, therefore reducing its market value. That's what was stated in the letter from Mr. Sullivan. The district and the property owners have not yet met to discuss a fair exchange of values, and the sewer district is committed to fairly compensating the owners at a fair value. We feel we have value to offer in excess of just dollars, such as access to public water and public sewer for the other lots that this group of folks own. You're all aware of the nitrate level in the groundwater in Sioux Lake is the main problem the sewer district is working to solve. Those nitrate levels will most likely limit any development of those small lots without the needed public infrastructure, so we feel there's value in talking about that. The district would ask that you, again, continue this hearing to allow us that time to sit down and negotiate that fair compensation package with the property owners, so that you can grant this petition for public easement to allow public utilities that are needed for right-of-way for public infrastructure to address public health issues in Sioux Lake. I'm sure that you could say "public" more times in a sentence. So, I would propose that we can accomplish this before your November 7th meeting, if you'd like to extend the meeting to then. I would also like to publicly thank the Commission for your support and the grants, staff, time in preparing a grant application for the new Delivering Local Assistance Grant Program through the Department of Commerce. The grant was submitted this week, with a lot of work from your staff and the sewer district staff, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Any, come on up. Any public comment on the petition?
Commissioners, my name is Zane Sullivan. I'm appearing here on behalf of the heirs of the two partners who were operating under the name Northwest Pacific Investments. This particular piece of property is very, very unique, and I'm fairly late coming into the picture of this particular matter, the request to petition to the county to obtain a roadway in this area. The reason that I join in the request that maybe you continue this matter to afford the parties an opportunity to do further investigation and further discussion is, from my standpoint, the appraisals that were done commented upon the potential building sites and possibility of development of building sites adjacent to the proposed roadway. The properties involved here really were created in the absence of a subdivision. The property was purchased, chunks were conveyed off, and what we're dealing with now is essentially what's left of the original purchase, rather than something that was designed into a subdivision plat. So, the utility of the properties that are adjacent to the proposed roadway, and what might be beneficial from the roadway, are still a question to me that need further investigation and analysis. I think that is evident in the two appraisal reports done by Stevenson Company. So, I joined with Ms. Curtis and asked the Commissioners to consider postponing action on this matter until we've had a further opportunity, one, to do our research, and develop perhaps a proposal that everybody is in accord with as to value. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comment? Okay, without objection, I would recommend that we continue this till November 7th. Are we good with that? Okay. Thanks, everyone, for commenting and participating, and look forward to some constructive dialogue on all parties' parts. Thank you. So, in the spirit of continuing to talk about road petitions, we will continue the public hearing that we opened previously on a petition to alter the right-of-way known as Jetty Road, and this would be up in the swan. And unless Sam has something to add right now, we will jump right to Steve Nyde for an update.
Yes, Commissioners. We, I did produce a road viewer's report a mere one hour ago. I was waiting to hear from one of the landowners to the west of Grace Saloti's property. I did receive a call about an hour ago from a Mary Jane Hindell, who said that she would waive damages and not, or not claim any damages, and was perfectly okay with this alteration. That land is owned by several landowners collectively. I asked her in the phone call if she had authority to speak for those other landowners. She assured me that she did, that she'd been paying, she had solely been paying taxes on it for the last 40 years, and was virtually the only one of the group that actually used the property. And in my words, her attitude was, "What's the big deal? No problem, go ahead." Like I said, I just received that phone call. I had waited to finish up the viewer's report until then. I did finish the viewer's report. Juanita, who was the co-road viewer, being not here today, did not have a chance to look over the report. So, I will read it, and it's basically my report. It's mostly just factual. I've left out any recommendation because she was not here to approve. So, I will read that report. The date of the viewing was August 15th, 2019. In attendance was Juanita Vero, myself, Steve Nyde, the petitioner, Grace Saloti, her son, Jesse Arno, Grace's surveyor, Ken Jenkins, local resident Kathy Talbot, and another local resident, Gary Nelson. At approximately 2:30 PM, the attendees met at the site of the subject road and investigated both the existing and proposed road locations. Site distance was a primary concern, and the two locations seemed about equal in that regard. Since that meeting, Glenn Cameron of MDT, Montana Department of Transportation, visited the site of the new proposed road and reported that location meets minimum standards, minimum site distance requirements. This initial inspection by Glenn does not mean a new approach permit is assured. The issue of access to the property to the west of Grace Saloti's property in Section 30 was also discussed. That's the property I just had talked about, owned by multiple owners. That property is owned jointly by multiple people, and the viewers are concerned about their consent and possible request for damages. We have suggested to the petitioner the desire for confirmation that these landowners will consent and not seek damages. The construction of the new road alignment was also discussed. The petitioner and her surveyor assured us the road would be built to county standards at the petitioner's expense. The new alignment would shorten the distance from the paved highway to the properties accessed from Jetty Road, and would eliminate approximately 1,100 feet of gravel road. The configuration of the new intersection, proposed new intersection of Jetty Road and Highway 83 would be an improvement over the existing intersection. That is the end of the report, so I'm here to answer any questions that pertain to the viewing or anything else.
Okay, and Shane or John, do you have anything you want to add on this? Okay. Okay, thanks, Steve. We might have questions for you in a minute. This is a public hearing, continuation of a public hearing. Is there any public comment on the petition to alter Jetty Road? Come on up and please state your name for the record.
Mary Talbot, I live at 1358 Jetty Road in Condon. Is this already a done deal, because the road has already been cut? Road has been, the area for the road, trees have been cut down, stumps have been removed.
I can speak to that. Steve Nyde, I was told, and maybe I should just let the petitioner and her surveyor speak to it, but they conveyed to me that the path was cleared for this new proposed road to accommodate the contractor, contractor's schedule, and that, no, it's not a done deal yet until they decide. But obviously, Grace Saloti has some confidence that it will be altered, unless she just wanted to cut the trees down for some other reason.
So, that is correct. It is not a done deal till we take action on it today, but the property owner can certainly do what he wants.
She can do what she wants to do with it, but it just seems a little jumping the gun to me.
That would be on her. We have yet to make any decision.
Okay, and I have a petition here. I don't, since Juanita's not here today, I don't know who to present this to.
Can I give it to Emmy right here? Okay. Thank you.
Now, if I understand correctly, that this, if the Montana DOT turns this down after it's approved, not before it's approved, that this whole situation can be eliminated?
Shane?
So, I guess if the county approves a petition or accepts a petition and agrees to place the road there, it's entirely possible that MDT will not allow the county to put in a road approach there. But if you look at, I guess Glenn Cameron, who represents MDT, his email basically stated that there's no reason that they wouldn't allow an approach there. It meets site distance standards. So, I think it looks favorable, just there's no guarantee.
Okay, so, yes, hypothetically.
Because I just talked to the DOT.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I just talked to the Montana DOT, and the guy that I talked to said that he will be coming up to do a evaluation.
That is correct.
Okay, so, even though there's one already been done?
No, hypothetically, even after our action today, if it's approved, they could take issue with the, with the approach, although given what we've heard from them thus far, that is unlikely.
Okay, so, you received an email from Larry Garlick about the first meeting, about everything that was wrong with it, and you received a letter from the Greggs expressing their disapproval in this, right?
Yes, so.
And my disapproval.
Okay.
Ma'am, would you be open to a question?
Yeah.
So, could you describe the nature of your disapproval?
The where it's located, for one thing, coming out on the highway, main highway.
Some more detail.
There's two no-passing zones each direction where this road is going to be coming out. It's on a, there's a hill coming into it from south going north. There's a rise, then it goes down, and the way those log trucks fly through there, there's no way if anybody pulled out in front of them, you can't, their way, they could get slowed down. That's my main, main concern.
Great, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Additional public comment? Or if the petitioner is here and wants to come up to add anything, that would be fine too.
Hi. My name is Wanda Freholtz, and I live in Condon. I do not live on Jetty Road, but from the last meeting, it doesn't apparently matter where you live, as long as you're in Missoula County. And I would just like to say, I know everybody that lives on that road, the Garlicks, the Jettys, I mean, Garlicks and the Greggs and Mary Talbot, and nobody wants this. One person wants this, so you guys are just going to move a county road. And I think it's really sad that none of their opinions matter. The safety doesn't matter. The safety doesn't matter. And it's like, the only person that's benefiting is Grace. And I just don't understand why it can't be left alone. I just want to say that. And I think, you know, the other people, they all pay taxes. They should have some rights. And for her to start on the road without your approval just seems wrong to me because there's been nothing settled and it just seems wrong. We all live in Condon too, and we should have some rights. Just saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jenkins, were you coming up here to the mic?
Thank you, Commissioners. For the record, Ken Jenkins with Montana Northwest Company, representing Grace Saloti, the owner. All these road petitions on the agenda occurred to me, this must have been what it's like back in the early 1900s. So I'd like to address a couple of the issues. First, the logging and the clearing. I know probably on the ground, that looks like jumping the gun. I know the logger very well. He's done a lot of work for me personally. I have some property up in the Swan as well. The reason that the strip of trees were cleared that's along the north boundary of Grace's property, over the summer, Grace took a largely congested piece of forest all along the current Jetty Road and logged that, thinned it out, cleaned the understory out, and it is beautiful, beautifully done logging job. But what that does is kind of open the remaining timber up to wind damage. And she had purposely left a strip of trees along the north boundary, and Gary, her neighbor, who lives to the north, has buildings up against that boundary. And part of the concern was that this winter, those remaining lodge poles that were up in the strip that she left would blow over on his buildings. So come to find out, Gary, the neighbor, would have preferred that all of those trees go anyway. The logger, Mr. Danzer, is pulling his equipment out, or was going to pull his equipment out on a large job, that the equipment wouldn't be there. So between those folks that were involved there, they made the decision to clear those trees out while the equipment was there. There was a very practical reason for doing that. There is no jumping the gun. There's a lot of work to do remaining after whatever happens here potentially until we actually have approval to do this road. So Montana Department of Transportation, I alluded to this at the first hearing, we did make application for an approach review. I think the first thing is their environmental assessment. MDT refused to act on that paperwork until this county process is complete. So yes, we still do have the MDT element to this if this moves forward after today. The safety factor has been mentioned a time or two. I have measured site distance personally from both the existing approach for Jetty Road as well as this new location. The new location is as good or better for site distance. The new road, if it happens, would come in perpendicular to the highway. I've, as Steve can attest, I've given him a little bit of grief. The existing Jetty Road, you can exit the highway pretty much at highway speed because it's just a very gentle, comes in at about a 30-degree angle, which is not safe. Grace's personal driveway comes in right in the middle of that county highway intersection as well. So certainly, the new location would be safer. The property to the west, which on your screen is the timbered property, you can see kind of a dashed white line, which was a, it's a two-track road across the surface of the ground that those folks have used to access a cabin. They are aware that that never was a formal easement. And one of the things I would pass out is just a statement that was signed by Mary Jane. And I would add, if you look at cadastral, it looks like there's six or seven owners on that property. I don't know all of the details, and Grace could probably add to what I'm saying, but a number of those property owners are, have passed. It's a large family conglomeration ownership, and there really isn't that many people on there anymore. But this is a, I've got five copies here I'd like to hand out.
Sure. Bring them on up.
It's just a very simple statement signed by Mary Jane that says, "I will not look for prescriptive easement through Grace's property, and we will not look for damages from county for crossing over property with new Jetty Road." The amount of their property that is crossed by the new Jetty Road is about less than 20 feet. It's just a little tiny corner up at the north end. So the other thing I'd pass out is, as part of Grace discussing this matter with the neighbors to the west, and again, while the logging equipment was in place, I will pass these out as well. Those are pictures of roadwork from Jetty Road into the property to the west, into Mary Jane's property. While the logging equipment was there, Grace agreed to essentially pioneer a new route that is entirely on the neighboring property to their cabin. So essentially, Grace built them a new road that is an improvement over the two-track that they already have. So we're open to questions. We don't think really that there's any technical or real legitimate reasons to not do this. It shortens the amount of county maintenance. That footage, it would be a different conversation, but possibly that could mean extending maintenance further north on Jetty Road. It will be a much safer intersection, and at least the new 250 feet of road would be built to county standards, which the existing Jetty Road is not. So certainly open to questions. And like I say, if you have further questions about the neighbors to the west, and Grace is much more familiar, she's good friends with that family, so. And Grace is in attendance today.
Okay.
Thank you.
If you want. Grace, would you like to come on up and?
Go ahead, Grace. What do you want?
Yeah, just wanted to give you a chance, anything that you wanted to add at this time?
I don't really know what more to say. I think the, about, I'm too tall, about the road being pre-made, like what Ken said, is I agreed to do that for the neighbor who is affected at that end of that property, which is Gary Nelson. I tried to be a good neighbor and leave that buffer of trees so he would have a nice buffer, and I didn't disturb his little piece of heaven. And he came and said, "Why'd you leave those? I want them gone. They're going to fall on my buildings." So while all the equipment, like Ken said, was there, we went ahead and moved the trees out of the way and the stumps. And regardless if this goes through or it doesn't, it would have happened anyway. And regardless if this goes through or it doesn't, Mary Jane and Gordy, who I've been in contact with as a neighbor for now 15, 16 years, whatever it's been, I had them, I asked them to please come down from Callisbell and just meet with me because I wanted their input. And they were more than happy if I put in the new driveway for them. So I did that, and she said, you know, "We do have access off of Craft Creek Road 2, two places off Craft Creek." And that was my primary concern, regardless if this goes through or not. So I've tried to really, really hard to communicate with all the neighbors and tried to let everybody know as much as I can as I catch them. And I have a phone too, so, you know, if anybody has any questions, they can always call me. I'm more than happy to answer them or walk around with someone.
Thank you. And could you state your name for the record, please?
Oh, Grace Saloti.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And before we continue with, thanks, you're good. Before we continue with public comment, Commissioner Slotnick had a question.
For the first woman that spoke, would you mind approaching the podium?
And if you could state your name again, please.
Mary Talbot.
Thanks. I just wanted to get a handle on the reasons why you didn't want this road moved. And if I understand it right, safety was your primary reason. Also, if I understand it correctly, and please let me know if I got it wrong, there was only an initial inspection done by MDT, but later they will come out and do a proper evaluation. It has yet to be done.
Okay.
So to my mind, let's let MDT, who are truly the experts on safety, handle the safety side of it. I also understand, and please correct me if I got it wrong, that there was some sense that when the original reaching out had been done on the part of neighbors, some of the neighbors felt like they hadn't been reached.
Exactly.
Okay, so if we put those two things aside, because neither of them, let's say if MDT handles the safety part and maybe better outreach could have been done, if this roadway has actually changed, how will the neighbors be affected? How would you negatively be affected? Would be more traffic? What will change?
The whole aspect of driving into the road. I mean, I'm fine with the entrance right now as far as safety. The new entrance she's, they're there proposing is, to me, going to be dangerous because there's two people that live on this road that are 80 years old. And it.
I'd like to hear what MDT has to say. I mean, do you imagine greater noise, more traffic? In some way, would you be impacted negatively that you're, that is not happening to you now?
Not by the road, but if anything's done with that piece of property, I think that Jetty Road will be impacted going north.
I see that as a separate question, and it's up to the landowner. Thank you.
Thank you.
I got another question. You did two site surveys.
Please direct your questions to the chair.
Oh, well, okay. There were two site surveys done, right?
Steve?
There was one official viewing done by Juanita and myself. Shane Stack and I came up later to again analyze primarily to analyze the site distance component. And just a further discussion with the neighbors, particularly Larry Garlic and his wife Pamela, who showed up at that meeting, just to try to hear the concerns more clearly and try to bring you people together a little bit better and try to address those concerns.
Ms. Talbot? Okay, thank you. Okay, we will continue with public comment on the petition to alter Jetty Road. Come on up if, and please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name's Meg Tracy. And we are owners of a property on Jetty Road, my husband Dave Cockin and Amy Nashby Kinch. And we would like to be further involved in planning for any changes to Jetty Road. We don't feel like we've been engaged, and I, we work with Grace, and she does a great job housing our extra family when they come at our cabins, and we have a good working relationship. It's, I don't want to say that that's not the issue, but we would like a little more opportunity to look at the changes together. I think our primary concerns are that it is a wildlife corridor. Barber Creek Road connects, Barber Creek connects through our property for animals crossing over from the Swan to the East Missions. And there's a lot of traffic among grizzlies and other animals who use that corridor. And any road that crosses differently, I think, could potentially be an issue that we want to better understand. We have teenage drivers, and I'm really glad to hear that MDT needs to be involved because it is a traffic engineering question. You know, as a layperson, I know there's lots of traffic conflicts where the new road is being proposed. Right now, there's a scenic outlook there already. So you have traffic ducking in and out from east and northbound to a little scenic out, like a little carve-out in the road to look at the Swans. It's an amazing view. People will actually spend the afternoon, will see them out there with their RV all day. And so that's already a route that's, you know, again, I'd leave it to a traffic engineer. But there's also, where we turn now, we're kind of at a rise. And where we would be turning out, I think if you're coming south, it's not a great view shed to see approaching traffic that sometimes is exceeding speed limits. And so for our, not just the older folks who live on Jetty Road, but for our teenage kids, I think we really want to have optimal safety. And I appreciate that MDT's traffic engineer is really being brought in and giving time to think about that. And then just finally, you know, I'm a very community-minded person, and when I think about county dollars and the work that needs to be done to improve the accessibility of Condon for sidewalk and pedestrian and bike traffic within Condon and our older folks who live there, I mean, right now, there just really isn't anything that would say, "Stop and walk from the community center to the museum to the store." I mean, there's a great little collection of resources right there that could be connected through a different project. So this seems like an important project to Grace and her income and her development. But I think as a community and a county, we should be really looking at our dollars and how they should be prioritized.
And just to be clear, we're not allocating any county dollars to this project. The petitioner is covering that.
Well, MDT traffic engineering time is not cheap. So some dollars are going to look at that project versus going in and looking at sidewalk and pedestrian infrastructure within Condon. So there are dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Commissioner Slotnick?
Shane, I wanted to ask you a question. When MDT comes out to do an evaluation, what do they do in terms of environmental analysis? I'm trying to address the last speaker's questions about who would officially determine what effect this new chunk of road would have on wildlife?
So when you submit an application for an approach permit, it also includes an environmental checklist. It's like a small environmental document, essentially.
Could you pull the mic a little bit closer?
Sure. And so that, that's kind of the environmental analysis is, you know, you document when you submit that permit what the impacts are going to be. Just having been out there, it's, I don't know that there's any wetland impacts or anything like that as far as environmental. So I don't know if there's going to be much as far as environmental impacts. And then as far as what they evaluate, they're going to look at the site distances and make sure that when you are trying to exit that approach or pull off the highway onto that approach, that there's adequate site distance. And when we were out there, and I would agree with Ken, we measured those distances, and they're obviously sufficient. And MDT's went out there after and confirmed that. It may not have been official, but they're going to do it the exact same way.
Okay, thank you. Just one shot at the apple, I'm sorry. Additional public comment? Steve?
Yeah, I'd like to add one thing. There's an element of trust involved here. Grace and Ken have assured us that they're going to build this road to county standards if the petition is granted. We're not holding them to, we're not requiring any bond. We're taking them at their word that they're going to do that. Just so that you're crystal clear and understand, if you grant the petition to alter, the new right-of-way is not going to contain a physical road. The old right-of-way that it was altered from now is not going to be used by the public or usable by the public. So until the new road is constructed in an altered right-of-way... So until the new road is constructed in an altered right-of-way, we're going on trust that everything's going to fall into place, that MDT is going to grant the approach, that the petitioner is going to follow through with her commitment to build the road to county standards. I don't doubt them, and I do trust them, but I just want to make that clear to you that we're, there is an element of trust here.
Do we have any recourse if things go sideways?
So what Steve Nyde just said is that if you grant this petition to alter the road, that once the road is built and accepted by the county as being built and constructed according to our standards, that then the old section of Jettie Road will no longer be a county road. And our recourse, if they, if they don't do that, is that it's my opinion that until the new section of Jettie Road would be built, that there still is legal and physical access on the old section of Jettie Road.
So I guess to follow up there, would there be any ability to condition this on, so hypothetically, if the road does not get built or gets built in a way that is not to our standards, the last thing we would want is the current Jettie Road to be obliterated or something, such that then there would not be any road that would meet our standards at all? So is there any way to, and I, and I get it as far as having an element of trust here, but, and not to be cynical, but we've seen times in the past where maybe our trust was not realized in follow-up action. Steve?
Okay, worst-case scenario, let's play this game. Grace dies, and her heirs say, heck no, we're not going to follow up with her commitment and build this road. But yeah, we've already, you've already altered the right-of-way. Worst-case scenario, we go in and build the road at our expense.
Yes, come on up, Mr. Jenkins.
Again, Ken Jenkins with Montana Northwest. So here's what we envisioned as this going forward, and this is kind of a, not the type of request that you or we deal with on a daily basis. So, but what I envision here is that if the alteration of the right-of-way is approved, and if we receive a permit for a, for a approach onto Highway 83, we will engineer the road to county standards. We would have County Public Works review those engineered plans and essentially approve those before construction would begin. Once the plans are approved, and whether it be this fall or next spring, whenever the actual road construction, according to the approved plans, is complete, if we were building a new county road within a subdivision, there's going to be an engineer's report and an as-built report, and we're going to have to prove through inspections and whatnot that this county road was built to county standards. And that's how we envision going forward. If you want to condition the change in right-of-way or the alteration of right-of-way to where the trigger to that is the acceptance by the county of the new portion of county road, we're fine with that. That's how we're planning to do this anyway. And I think it would make perfect sense that during that timeframe, the existing current route of Jettie Road remains in place until there's been an acceptance by the county and this whole thing is finished. If worst-case scenario, Grace dies and this never gets built, Jettie Road is still there. I agree, I think it would be unwise, even if we all trust each other, to alter the right-of-way today, banking on the idea that a new road's going to be built later. So if you can condition this in that manner, we're fine with that. That's what we're planning to do anyway.
John?
I'm not sure that we can condition a road alteration petition. I mean, I'm just trying to think how we would do that. And under the statute, there really isn't a process to grant an alteration petition with conditions. So unless somebody can convince me otherwise, and Ken just tried, my, the way that I would rather think about how to do this is to either deny the petition or grant the petition if the, if the petition is granted and the petitioners don't follow through on the commitments that they've made before today and here on the record, or the approach permit is not granted in a satisfactory way by MDT, that then maybe what we would do is bring a resolution to then rescind the action that you take here today, and everything goes back to, you know, Jettie Road is the way it was prior to taking any action on this petition. That's just the thought that I came up with in the last two minutes, so it might be half-baked.
Okay, why don't you hold that thought? I'm going to give Ms. Tracy an opportunity, if you want to speak again, to give our deputy county attorney some time to collect his thoughts.
Thanks. My only thoughts were just on the standards for maintaining a county road and the watershed. And so I appreciate that that would be part of the process MDT would follow. I mean, what we see is, you know, that there, there's a way to maintain these roads, and anything that went into that creek shed was just, I hadn't thought about that. But, and just the amount of work that goes into maintaining the current county road and the application of different, I don't know even what to say, the surfacing that's maintained, all of that would be potentially part of the watershed. So it's a very pristine area, and we love it. We love seeing the grizzlies go through. We love, you know, being there. So we just really want to protect it.
Thank you. Does anyone who has not spoken want to speak to this issue? Mr. Nyde?
I'll take one more shot. So let's say things do go sour. Another resolution would be just to bring forth another petition to re-alter back to where it was before, doing the same thing as essentially is what John said could be possibly done by resolution. Another petition, alter it back.
Okay, thank you. All right, last chance. Anyone else want to speak on this? Okay, I will close the public hearing. Additional questions, discussion, motion?
I would move we approve the petition.
I will second that. Yeah, I feel like the safety concerns either have been addressed or will certainly be investigated by way of Montana Department of Transportation's review of the, the approach for the new alignment of Jettie Road. We really can't speak to what did or did not occur in terms of neighbor interaction leading up to this and whether it could have been better or not in terms of notification. We are merely taking action on what is provided before us and based on the road viewers' report and our staff and what we've heard preliminarily from MDT, I'm okay with granting the petition. So any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay, the petition's granted. Next on the agenda, in keeping with the spirit of roads today, is something that I assume that some in the audience have been waiting for, for a long time, and that this is a resolution regulating parking on Sawmill Gulch Road. And we will begin with a staff report presumably from Deputy County Attorney John Hart.
Thank you, Commissioners. I have a very brief staff report. What, what I've brought to you today is a draft resolution to regulate parking on Sawmill Gulch Road. The extent of the parking regulation on Sawmill Gulch Road would be from Sawmill Gulch Road just west of the turnoff to the main Trailhead parking lot, all the preceding, I don't even know what direction that is, westerly, to the end of the pavement on Sawmill Gulch Road, including, the no parking would include all of the area surrounding the junction of Sawmill Gulch Road and Russian Joe Road. And that is, that section of Sawmill Gulch Road is illustrated on Exhibit 1 of the draft parking regulation. We, we, and when I say we, the commission and the landowners up there and county staff have certainly heard a lot about Sawmill Gulch Road over the, over the last two years. And we've adopted it. Missoula County's adopted it as a county road. A little bit of history on this road, just for background, Sawmill Gulch Road has existed at least since the 19th century. I don't know if there was a sawmill up there at some point in time, but people have been living up there for at least 100 years. But it wasn't until the Sawmill Meadows subdivision was, was proposed and platted in the mid-'90s that the issue of Sawmill Gulch Road kind of took on a public element. And as part of that subdivision review, there were issues raised by the public that, in the Health Department, that runoff coming down the unpaved Sawmill Gulch Road was having some impact on Rattlesnake Creek. And there's some graphic photos that exist from that time period showing that heavy rains, you know, gullied, rutted-out road, brown water, a lot of sediment coming into Rattlesnake Creek. So that subdivision was conditioned on requiring the developer to pave a portion of Sawmill Gulch Road up to the subdivision. That, that recommendation to pave to alleviate some of the water quality concerns was not necessarily received, not every, it was not popular with everybody. People said, we do not want a two-laned road paved on Sawmill Gulch Road. This is adjacent to the National Recreation Area. Let's keep this, let's keep the paving of this road to preserve some of the aesthetic and recreational amenities. And so it was decided that Sawmill Gulch Road would be paved. Pavement is 14 feet wide, and there are periodic pullouts that have been paved too, which make the road width 20 feet. And in the mid-'90s, recreational use was not necessarily the issue that it is today. Recreational use on that road has increased exponentially. And so we've heard a lot over the last couple of years about the problems with parking on Sawmill Gulch Road and the very real-life safety and health issues that have been identified by the Sheriff's Department and by Public Works, and most significantly by the residents of the Sawmill Meadows subdivision. So that is the, that's the reason that I brought the parking regulation to you for your consideration today. I know that there is Mr. John Barrett's here to present some, some information. I think it's important, even though we've all heard about this many times, I think it's still important for purposes of a public record and for the citizens to understand some of the issues on Sawmill Gulch Road. So maybe with that, if Mr. Barrett's ready to make his presentation, I'll, I'll stop talking.
Okay, thank you, John. Mr. Barrett?
John Barrett. And Steve Grinnell's here as well, and he can answer questions that I can't. But thanks, John, for, for doing this. When the word PowerPoint and my name is mentioned, I know everybody in here has PTSD, so. John said a PowerPoint, but a short one.
Do we have cars in the ditch?
Yeah, we do. And you've got a good ending to it as well.
Okay.
But this is pretty self-explanatory. Sawmill Gulch is a narrow road. It narrows up even more as the winter progresses, because as the road gets plowed, it gets narrower and narrower. We've talked about signage, Shane and his group have been great at meeting with us about potential signage that should go on the road to address some of these issues. But before we can even really address that, we have to address the parking issue. Because my understanding is, right now, there is no restrictions on parking. And that's very problematic. The lack of proper signage, we can talk about, but it basically is another issue that we should deal with. John's right, the public wants to access that area for recreation purposes. But I think Judge Malloy said it best, he lives up there, access doesn't mean convenience. There is access to get up to the meadows at the top, but you have to park in the Trailhead parking lot unless something else is done to clear the fork that goes up to the gate up there. I monitored traffic over the last four years on that road, and it's increased almost 400 percent, just the recreational traffic, bikes, people like that. And it's summer and winter. All these photos are focused on winter because I had to keep this less than 70 pages. So the issues that are created by people parking on the road also have to do with the plowing. Obviously, when there's vehicles parked on the side of the road, really challenging to plow the road. If we can page through this, this is a very common occurrence. You're driving up the road, somebody is parked on the road, whether they're stuck there or parked there, they just are not by the vehicle. So you have a decision to make of whether or not you can get by them. In this situation, you couldn't get by them, and so you had to back down the road because there's really no place to turn around on the road. And this was another vehicle that went up there, may have all-wheel drive, but didn't have snow tires. These are just a series of, just taken over the course of one winter, mind you, one winter. And this is only over a few months, because we were gone for an entire month, January to the middle of February. These are vehicles that are parked on the side of the road. And you'll see, as you stroll through this, you can go ahead and go again. These are all different vehicles. You can see how they park or just pull off to the side. That Chevrolet is right in the track, the middle one is right in the track, where you struggle to get by it. Next? Here's another series of them. And there's two vehicles there. Because they figured there wasn't room enough to park where the Suburban is, they parked down the road a little bit, but it's still increasingly difficult to get past them. Next? Another series of vehicles. The one on the far left, and if you'll see the one on the far right, are both parked at the junction of Russian Joe Road and the fork. That is the most problematic area in the whole road. And it's problematic for numerous reasons. You'll see, there's other slides as we move forward, but people will park there, go up the fork, leave their cars there, and if they see one car parked there, the next person will come up and park there the same. There's a slide that I included in here. We have to come down where the far right-hand side, there's a little sign that says private road, that's the road up to the Sawmill Meadows. When you come down that road, we need to sort of have a lane to get down the road to get out of there. It's not so important for, for some of us to have to access it, but... to access it, but there's a doctor who lives up there and a federal judge who lives up there. And if they can't get down the road, they can't get to work. Go ahead and roll it. This happened on that road, where the motorhome was parked there, for two days. Two days. Just parked there, enjoyed the wilderness, Alaska plates, and A, we couldn't get ahold of them because they were out recreating, and I don't know where they were. And we had to try to figure out how to get around them. We ended up having to plow a complete wide-open area to get around them. And, you know, it's an issue that shouldn't, we shouldn't have to deal with. Next. Just more vehicles parked there. You can see, again, this is sort of at the bottom of Russian Joe Road and the fork up to the recreation area. Next. More. Go ahead. The one on the far right, this was taken out of the window of my truck. As I was coming down the road, I thought that vehicle was moving, the one on the far right. There was nobody in it. It was just parked there. And it kind of makes it hard to go down the road and get past him. And I told the story last year about it. I won't repeat it at great length, but my daughter broke her arm, we couldn't get down the hill to get x-rayed. The county, thank you, has changed the designation on the road, so now we're dealing with different issues. And parking is obviously an issue. Next. Here's again, a series of vehicles parking on Sawmill Gulch Road. And this won't go on forever, I promise. Go ahead. So, this one, particularly egregious, we called the Forest Service, there's a Forest Service truck at the very back. You can see a series of vehicles parked along the road. I think a group of people went up to cross-country ski and just parked there. And, and they just lined up and parked. I think there were two vehicles past this one. And the Forest Service came up and said, "We, we don't have the right to do anything to them." And if the designation of no parking on that road isn't addressed, this issue will repeat itself over and over and over. And it has for the last five years. Next. Public's not happy with it. I'll send you the slide if you want to put it on the frame, you guys, so.
Yeah, that's a great screensaver right there.
Yeah, it is. It is. So, in general, there are parking issues in the winter and the summer. You can't really talk about wintertime parking issues if you don't talk about plowing issues. That's something that the County Works has been clear about, so we don't need to address that right now. But if the fork is not plowed somehow, some way, once in a while, people will park right there. And when it snows and piles up, there's really not many places to put the snow, unless you park all the way up and clear the fork. That's a whole nother discussion we're talking about parking today. That's it. Any questions?
Not right now. Thanks, John.
You're welcome.
Mr. Grinnell, do you have anything you want to add?
No.
Okay. And for our media representative in the room here, or representatives, if you were waiting, I have no idea what you were wanting to capture, but if it was the court of record, we changed up the order of the, of business today and took care of that first on the agenda, so.
Was it the MDT SUDs?
No, that's still yet to come. That's a coming attraction, so, okay.
I'm still here.
Okay, hang in there. Yeah, yeah, Josh.
It continues to be yet.
Just wanted to add, for anybody who's here for something else, if they were first hearing your wonderful presentation, they would think, "Why don't those slow-moving, thick-headed officials actually get off their fat butts and do something?" And want all to know that, since this group of people have been here, we have adopted this as a county road, moved this resolution forward, and we're not moved by your argument today because we were moved by it a long time ago. And actually, progress is happening, and we are on your side, and hoping to create a solution that doesn't just work for residents, but that works for recreators too. I want to say this, the media, they would say, "Why don't they do some, look at all these problems?" Well, we've been on it, and this is just the next step in solving this problem. Thanks.
We are all about problem-solving today.
Yeah. And, and to that end, I really want to give Shane a bunch of credit for working with neighbors, and the neighbors a bunch of credit for working with Shane to arrive at a good solution. So, thanks for all the collaboration.
Thank you. Any additional public comment on the resolution to regulate parking on Sawmill Gulch Road? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any additional discussion? Questions? Or a motion?
I move we approve the resolution.
I will second that, and I too think this is a great, concrete step in the progression of solving some real problems that folks have been living with winter after winter, and I, I'm optimistic that we will see the fruits of our labor this coming winter. So, we've had...
Thanks for your patience.
We had a motion and a second discussion. All in favor? Aye. Okay. Thank you. Okay, next, I will open a public hearing on a request to zone an unzoned parcel to Montana SUDs LLC Special District, and we will begin with a staff report by Jamie Erbacher.
Thank you, Dave. So this is a request from Derek Hockenbrow with Montana SUDs LLC, represented today by James Sage with Missoula Engineering. And the request, as you mentioned, is to zone 6900 Gooden Lane from unzoned to Montana SUDs LLC Special Zoning District. The site is 5.93 acres and located off of Gooden Lane and Butler Creek Road, which is just north of Interstate 90. Butler Creek Road occupies a 30-foot roadway easement along the west property boundary of the subject property, and a 35-foot channel-change easement is located on the south property boundary. The channel-change easement was acquired by the State of Montana to relocate an irrigation ditch. The subject property is surrounded by uses that include residential, planned residential, commercial, and farmland. There's a single-family residence and a detached garage currently occupying the site. West Point subdivision is northeast of the subject property with additional phases planned that would be directly east of the subject property. Ivy Nursery and the Hanson Ranch are west of the subject property and Butler Creek Road. Property south of the interstate includes the Missoula Development Park, which is developed commercially and industrially. Dismet School is also located south of the interstate, just off of Butler Creek Road. Access to the site is off of Gooden Lane. Steep terrain makes the site inaccessible from Butler Creek. There is an existing sidewalk along Gooden Lane that will eventually connect to the planned residential development to the east. The site is located within the air-station zone and within the Missoula Rural Fire District. The closest rural fire station is located approximately 1.3 miles away from the property. Water supply for firefighting has not been determined at this time. However, all permits for expansions, remodels, and new construction will be reviewed by Missoula Rural Fire for compliance with NFPA. The Community Wildfire Protection Plan map indicates that this property is within the Wildland Urban Interface Intermix classification. The intermix defines this area as a place where structures and wildfire vegetation are interspersed. The plan has mapped the Butler Creek Road and Gooden Lane area as a low-fire hazard, meaning that the likelihood of a fire occurring at this location and the probable intensity of a fire is low if it were to occur. The site does not contain any map floodplain, however, Zone 8 floodplain is located on the west side of Butler Creek Road at a significantly lower elevation. The property is within the urban service area. The City of Missoula has given approval to connect to city water and sewer with the condition that the property be zoned to allow for the, to allow for the proposed brewery as a permitted use. So sewer is actually the driving reason behind this request. The city will not allow a property owner to connect to the city services unless the property is zoned, or the infrastructure is only proposed to serve a maximum of two dwelling units on a parcel. Annexation was discussed with the city when the airport and the development park were annexed, but the city declined to annex the property and instead granted them conditional contract sewer conditioned upon an approved rezoning. The applicable land use plan is the 2019 Missoula Area Land Use Element map, which is an amendment to the 2016 Missoula County growth policy. The land use element designates this property as neighborhood residential and recommends predominantly residential land uses with small-scale commercial uses as a secondary use. A maximum of eight dwelling units per acre is recommended. The land use element recommends a mix of residential building types, including single-family, two-family, and multifamily. It states that commercial buildings should be sited along arterial or collector roads, providing clusters of limited commercial activity. The land use element encourages a mix of land uses and access to nearby destinations and amenities via walking, biking, or transit use. Just for reference, the city growth policy recommends a density of three to 11 dwelling units per acre, and it supports auxiliary uses, including small-scale commercial uses, and also recommends design standards similar to what the county recommends. The parcel is currently unzoned. The surrounding zoning includes a Chapter 6 special district known as East Butler Creek Foothills, which is located east of the subject property, unzoned land to the west and southeast, and city and county industrial zoning south of the interstate. The county zoning regulations were adopted in 1976 and most recently amended in 2017. The purpose of zoning regulations is to address key issues such as health, safety, infrastructure, and consistency in innovation through land development. The purpose of ruled zoning districts is to create a district that stabilizes and protects land uses while allowing latitude to promote residential harmony, conduct gainful business, and contribute to the development of a sound economic base for the county. As I mentioned earlier, this parcel has been granted contract sewer from the city, however, a condition of approval was to zone the property. If sewer was not available to this site, the parcel could have been developed with a brewery subject to sanitation approval for a septic, and then zoning would not have been required. The intent of the proposed Montana SUDs LLC zoning district is to include a mix of uses, including residential and small-scale commercial. A brewery which is the intended use of the property would be permitted use with a maximum floor area of 20,000 square feet. A liquor-licensed casino and drive-through establishment would be strictly prohibited. Other permitted and conditional uses in the Montana SUDs Special Zoning District include all forms of residential at a density maximum of eight dwelling units per acre, retail trade with no outdoor storage or display, daycares, offices, long-term care facilities. A special exception uses identified in the Montana SUDs zoning district include service stations, retail trade with outdoor display and storage, public and quasi-public buildings and uses, and public utilities. Each of these use types mentioned would be limited in scale to the 8,000 square feet per establishment. The proposed zoning would establish development standards for setbacks, building height, lot area, lot width, parking, signage, landscaping, and other design aspects relative to the development. Building design standards from the City of Missoula Design Excellence are being incorporated to ensure the proposed zoning district aligns with the City of Missoula's design standards where residential development is intermixed with commercial development. The City of Missoula Design Excellence overlay applies architectural design standards and guidelines to Missoula's primary commercial areas, including main commercial corridors. The standards are intended to shape the development that is consistent with community character. Montana SUDs sign, proposed sign regulations would allow for a maximum of 400 square feet of signage per lot. This exceeds the signage allowance for all commercial and industrial zones in the county as they are now, as well as maximum allowance for an individual billboard sign. So staff is recommending a reduction of the proposed signage and would recommend compliance with the CC-1 Neighborhood Commercial Sign Standards. Staff's also recommending a condition to add a section in the Montana SUDs Special Design Standards to clarify which regulations apply should a conflict arise between the design standards and the general regulations of Chapter 3. And assuming that there would be questions as to why we recommended approval of a special district versus a standard Part 2 zone, just thought I'd outline that for you. The existing residential zones don't allow for the proposed use, and the commercial zones would be too intense as far as residential density as well as commercial uses go. And so we didn't feel that either one of those options would be supportable. The zoning code, we know, is currently underway for a rewrite. However, that's not slated to be completed until spring or early summer of 2020. And rather than holding up development, staff felt that the next best option was to move forward with a special district. We did send this out for adjacent property owner notification and to numerous agencies. We received one letter of support from a neighbor in the West Point subdivision who felt the planned development would be a nice alternative to what the property is currently being used for, and that the development would bring more value to their property located in the West Point subdivision. Dismet School provided comments stating that they do not endorse the request and provided some initial concerns. Those concerns included creating a zoning district that would reduce the potential for additional students to attend Dismet School, the potential for a brewery to be located between the West Point subdivision and Dismet School, and the concern that this would be a light industrial district. This did go before Planning Board on September 3rd, where they voted six to zero and recommended approval of the request as presented. Mr. Dreesen with Dismet School was present at the hearing and provided testimony as to why he did not think this was an appropriate location for the proposed use. Mr. Daniel Zumpf, excuse me if I got that wrong, but he is the West Point homeowner and vice president, he is a West Point homeowner and the vice president for West Point Homeowners Association. He stated that he had heard a mix of comments from residents in his neighborhood. According to him, many were strongly opposed, some were, some were ambivalent, and others were fine with it. Planning Board did discuss item number 12 of the permitted uses in the zoning district, and that reads, "The eating and drinking establishments with a maximum gross floor area of 20,000 square feet and only permitted to serve beer and wine," which would be a permitted use, and that excludes that, any establishment that has a liquor-licensed casino or drive-through restaurant. So, they took concern with that mostly because of the hours of operation. So as it is right now, state law has a mandated time at which breweries have to stop serving and then close their doors. So some board members felt that having a different eating and drinking establishment that could potentially be open from 8:00 AM to 2:00 would not be appropriate. They did make a motion to amend that permitted use. Their motion read to, read that facilities for the production of beer, wine, and cider with a maximum gross floor area of 20,000 square feet, and would only be permitted to serve beer, wine, cider, and food, and then strictly prohibited the liquor-licensed casino and drive-through restaurant. And so they presented that as a motion that did fail. And then they went on and made a motion to approve the request as recommended by staff, and that passed six to zero. After Planning Board hearing, I did receive one more letter of support from a neighboring property owner in the West Point subdivision. You should have received that before the hearing, however, if you did not, I do have a copy, and that's from Mr. Tim Winger, W-I-N-G-E-R. And he was in support of the request. His only concern was lighting. And today, prior to the hearing, Mr. Commissioner Strohmeier also contacted me and had some concerns over lighting. So based on the information I've provided for you today, and the staff report caps as recommending approval of the request, subject to two conditions, and possibly three, if you would like to amend the requirements for lighting. and possibly three if you would like to amend the requirements for lighting. I do have a recommended condition for lighting. I've shared that with Dave prior to the hearing, and I've also shared that with the applicants so that they're aware of it as well. And that is all I have for you today. I do know that the applicants would like to talk to you about the lighting, so.
Great. Thank you. Would the applicant or applicant's representative like to speak?
Hello. I am Derek Hockenbrow, representing MT Suds, doing business as Other World Brewery and Blendery. Yeah, we can talk about lighting if you don't mind. I have a brief comments about my project. Thank you to CAPS and Jamie for all the hard work you've done getting us to this point, and thank you commissioners for listening to our zoning request. So we're trying to accomplish a lot more than a brewery. Yeah, we want to make delicious, unique beers, but we want to do a lot more. And three main things, that's community, agriculture, and culture. The Planning Board meeting was very valuable, and a lot of discussion there brought up a lot of discussion with us, and I think we moved forward with a positive outcome. As far as community goes, we really want Other World to be a thriving community. Unlike most bars and restaurants, breweries have a very unique ability to bring people together. All walks of life, people that might have never come out of their shells somehow feel that the environment of a brewery allows them to do that. I've worked with a number of breweries and at a few breweries over the years, and it's always incredible to me watching those communities form. Based on the land use remapping project meetings, which many I attended, I believe that development in this area is incoming, and I hope that Other World will be a positive and strong hub for people in the area to meet where this really currently doesn't exist out there. During the Planning Board meeting, Planning Board member Niva Hassan, and I hope I said that right, suggested that studies have shown that breweries and libraries in particular help communities thrive, and I think maybe a lot of us have actually seen that. As you can see in pretty much any brewery in town, they're family environments. Kids are running around, often having just as good of a time as the adults, who are enjoying beer responsibly with an ounce limit. Second piece of what we're trying to do is agriculture. We plan to create a large cherry orchard on the back acreage of the property, and it should, from my research, it's plenty of space to have enough trees to produce enough cherries for at least one batch of beer, which we hope to be a Belgian sour cherry lambic, otherwise known as a creek. And, well, I hope that's our signature beer. All the research I've done regarding the property, including previously made soil tests and well log, have shown that the soil is actually great for an orchard, so we're looking to explore that. That will also allow us to be the first farmhouse brewery in Montana, as far as I know, which basically means we grow a significant amount of the ingredients that we use in our beer. My hope is that a high-profile orchard like this in Missoula could help inspire and bring on more agricultural projects of this nature. It also, I believe cherry orchards are very beautiful, so also adds the benefit of beauty and local agriculture production. And I hope to work with people in the community nearby, and hopefully students of Desmet, to also encourage the importance of agriculture. Third aspect is culture itself. We're calling it Other World because we are connecting our beers to ancient myths and modern legends from different cultures around the world. Missoula is a hub of culture in Montana, and I believe that we can be a great addition to this in very unique ways, sharing stories about cultures that people might not ever experience. I believe that storytelling and stories in general have the ability to transform us, to help us grow, to bring people together. And I hope to encourage that and encourage the imagination of people when they come in, including, again, hopefully working with the students of Desmet. I know that Principal Dreison has made his concerns public, and I really hope that we can work together with creative coordination moving forward. As in the Missoulian, Hatton Littman, spokesperson for Missoula Public County Schools, stated that they aren't aware of any complaints about breweries in the district, and several breweries are located closer to schools than ours would be to Desmet. We intend to continue that trend, but should any issues arise, we are ready and willing to find fast solutions. The reality is the property is just not aligned for residential. The topography really doesn't encourage it. Analysis have been done by large companies, and they've walked because you can't really put high-density residential there. And there's really only a usable bench, and it faces the highway and is on the same level immediately with it, which is probably why the property has been on the market for a significant amount of time. Also currently, technically, the property could be open to different projects like a liquor store or a casino that can just jump on septic and wouldn't have to go through zoning. I've heard from West Point residents and local business owners, and I have no doubt that a community-oriented space with amenities like ours would help bring residents into the Desmet School District, and I sympathize with his desire for more kids at his school. And I, I hope, and I believe it's going to help develop what I think is going to be a new thriving area in Missoula. Again, I thank you for your time, and I believe that Other World will be a nexus of community, agriculture, and culture.
Thank you. Is there additional comment, public comment on the zoning proposal? Come on up.
Good day. For the record, my name is Carol Ann Sowerby. I'm a real estate agent in town. I've been working with Derek and following this property for quite some time. He pretty much said everything very fluently. I don't know that I need to repeat all the details, but I think just looking at community over history, typically you find areas of community where there is a place to convene, and oftentimes a local watering hole decades and decades ends up where that takes place. Looking at the Missoula and surrounding areas, we've seen, for example, the Lolo Creek Brewery in Lolo, that has established itself as a really great community and family establishment. We see a lot of residential growth around it, above it, really nice communities that have evolved. Additionally, I know that the trough out in Target Range for a long time was fought long and hard. We know that that area has always wanted to stay put and not have any growth or density or anything like that. And as I speak with residents in that area, they have 180 degrees turned their mind around about that, at least the people that I've spoken to, and they quite enjoy having that neighborhood eatery place to convene for a drink or whatnot. We also have seen the Highlander. They've grown their establishment. They now have more outdoor area for children and families. So we can just see this natural progression in embracing in this community situations that Other World would probably provide to areas where, as a county, we're seeing everyone, the support of the community, or I should say the support of you guys pushing growth out west of town and looking at those corridors. And as Derek mentioned, you know, if that area is going to grow residentially, having somewhere for them to all convene and provide sharing of stories and community, I just think historically we've seen it happen, and there's an opportunity here to continue that, that situation to occur in this area. So I hope that you'd support it.
Thank you.
James Sage with Missoula Engineering here to represent the applicant as well. I just wanted to touch upon the staff recommendations. We don't have any issues with the first two recommendations. However, the new lighting section that's proposed, we just wanted to clarify in the, within the standard, it states lighting that is oriented upward, strings of lights, and mercury vapor light fixtures are prohibited. We'd just like to clarify that strings of lights wouldn't preclude holiday-type lighting or, you know, lighting on a back balcony porch area that you see in other breweries. So that would be our only recommendation.
Thank you. While we're on that topic, Jamie, do you have any thoughts there? Other than striking strings of light, unless more definition could be given to them? Because I know exactly what you're talking about, and that's, that would certainly not be the intent to preclude that sort of lighting.
I could see precluding like the neon tube lighting that a lot of casinos use that wrap around their building that's very bright and intense, and so I could see precluding that. Don't know if that is something that we would want to specifically slay versus the string lights.
Josh, did you have a thought there?
Yeah, well, if we can do that, let's, let's do that. I'm with you on string lights and holidays, and they look really nice outside. And they're not the kind of things that are going to shine way up the hill and keep people awake at night who live in West Point. But the kinds of lights that would do that, and I'm not a lighting expert, I couldn't rattle them off, but the kind of lights that would do that, we should make sure those aren't part of it. I would leave it to you to identify them.
So on the fly, can you figure out what language that would?
I mean, would neon tube lighting wrapper, you know, would that?
I think that's acceptable, but there's no, no intent of neon lighting, so.
Okay. Neon tube, neon tube lighting? Okay, if that's, if that's a technical phrase, sure. Additional public comment? Okay, we will close the public hearing and have an opportunity for some questions if we have any. I have a cup, I have a couple. Jamie or the applicant, could you speak to, where does, where does the list of conditional uses derive from? Is that a standard list? When I see conditional uses, I always wonder, in some cases, are these really more impactful than permitted uses? And even though I know that currently the applicant's not proposing to necessarily do some of the things that are listed as conditional uses, just in the spirit of future options, are any of these truly more impactful than the permitted uses? Or is this just kind of boilerplate that we pulled from other zoning language?
So we did start, they started and, you know, worked with our office. As CC-1 for the base zone, unmodified it based on intensity of uses. Conditional uses, they can actually be approved administratively by staff, but there's some additional criteria as far as like landscaping may go that is required, that they comply with out of Chapter Four of the county zoning regulations. So it may be somewhat more intensive a use, but again, there's some additional criteria that they would just have to meet. But assuming they did that, it could again be approved administratively. The special exceptions, those are the ones that would have to go to the Board of Adjustment for an additional public hearing.
Okay. And the applicant is okay with the conditional uses listed? Any other questions? And thanks for your flexibility on the lighting piece. I, it's my, one of my goals to make sure that going forward, that zoning in Missoula County addresses night skies concerns, and particularly in that neighborhood, I'm sure that the adjoining property owners would love to see limits on light pollution, so. Okay, we're ready for a motion, or motions. Should we start with the conditions of approval?
I would move we accept the conditions of approval.
Do we, do we need to actually read them into the record? Emmy is.
Sorry, Emmy.
Okay. Your blood pressure's going up. Okay, we can do that. We can read.
Okay. Should I do the, do the whole deal? Okay, I move we approve the recommended motions. That, the request for zoning the unzoned parcel to.
And Josh, I think we want to start with the conditions, Section Two, and then we'll end with the.
Do two and then one?
Yeah. We like to do things backwards.
I don't want to start again. Should we do three, two, one? Okay. Number two, I would move we recommend the conditions of approval. One, strike Section Signs A of the MT Suds Special Design Standards and replace with the following language. All signs shall comply with the Missoula County Zoning Regulations, Section 3.04 M3 Neighborhood Commercial as amended. Two, add the following section to the MT Suds Special Design Standards. Conflicting regulations, the supplementary regulations of Chapter Three shall apply unless otherwise specified in the MT Suds Special Design Standards. If conflict between the two regulations arise, the MT Suds Special Design Standards shall govern.
Ooh, that's a big one.
Okay. Strike the lighting section of the MT Suds Special Design Standards and replace with the following language. All outdoor lighting proposed exclusive of the residential use shall be represented on a lighting plan which shall be reviewed and approved by CAPS prior to issuance of a zoning compliance permit, meeting the following requirements. All light fixtures shall be equipped with full cutoff optics as defined by IESNA. Light fixtures shall not be installed higher than 40 feet. Where the property borders a residential use, illumination at the property boundary line may not exceed .5 vertical foot candles, the amount of light measured on a vertical surface. Light fixtures shall be oriented to direct lighting downward and away from property boundaries adjacent to a residential use. Lighting that is oriented upward, strings of lights and mercury vapor light fixtures are prohibited, but we're going to ax that.
And so strings of light will be deleted and replaced by?
Neon tube.
Neon tube lights.
Okay, there we go.
No neon tube lights for you guys. The plan shall indicate the timeframe in which each fixture type will be illuminated.
Good? Yep.
Thank you.
Main motion? Or do we need to vote on? Okay, you move the conditions of approval?
I would move the conditions of approval.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We're ready for the main motion.
So I want to get the words right in, or should I just, right there? Move that the request for zoning the unzoned parcel to MT Suds LLC Special District be approved based on the findings of fact contained in the staff report, public testimony, and written comment, and subject to the recommended conditions of approval. The property subject to this approval is legally described, indeed Exhibit 3898 in Section 2.6 Township 14 NR20 West PMM.
We don't do enough zonings. We get a little rusty at this.
Yeah, sorry about the clumsiness.
I will second that. Any further discussion on the request, the zoning request? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Best of luck. And I will say, just to add to the long list of places that have been subject to public rancor and controversy in the past, another one would be Rattlesnake Market up northeast of here that at one point in time was extremely controversial but has since become a valued community hub. So thank you all.
On the cherries, if you looked into the high-density trellis plantings, you get a lot more in.
Yeah, I actually have.
Yeah, it's pretty cool.
We're doing a lot more, so it's a little, they're a little different.
Can you do them on like four-foot centers on trellises?
Probably be able to, but.
Yeah, you can get a lot of trees in that way.
There's, it's balanced.
Yeah, they're short, less, less, less life, but more. Yeah, I've done it with apples. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Last but not least, I'd like to open a public hearing on the Deer Creek Minor Subdivision.
Thank you. Last but not least, you're right. We made it.
And we will begin with a staff report by Lauren Miller. Thanks for hanging in with us out there, folks.
Lauren Miller, Planner with Community and Planning Services. This request today comes from LNC Land Holdings LLC, who is represented by Paul Forsting of Territorial Land Works for a three-lot minor subdivision located just off of Deer Creek Road in the east Missoula area. The subject lot, which is shown on the screen here, is just situated south of I-90 near the Canyon River Golf Course. This property is unique in that it is situated between the interstate, the railroad, and the Deer Creek Shooting Range. All these factors does make it unique for any sort of residential development. The property does currently have three storage unit buildings that were just recently constructed on the eastern side of the property near Deer Creek Road. These storage units were approved as a special exception by the Board of Adjustment in 2018. Other than these three storage unit buildings, the property is vacant. Here's some photos of the property from the interstate. As you can see from the first photo, the eastern side of the property, which now contains the storage unit buildings not shown on this photo, has low vegetation and is covered mostly in grasses. As you move to the west side of the property, the bottom photo, you can see that the vegetation becomes more dense. This is the preliminary plat proposed for the property. Lot is currently 66.1 acres in size. The proposed subdivision will result in three total tracts, each over 20 acres in size. The lots will be served from Deer Creek Road and a proposed 80-foot wide public and utility easement for the benefits of lots two and three. Lot one will have direct access on to Deer Creek Road. And as I stated, lots two and three will be served by that 80-foot wide access, which I have highlighted on the screen here. There are no new roads proposed at the time with this subdivision. The direct access for lot one onto Deer Creek Road, along with that proposed 80-foot wide public access and utility easement, does meet the requirement in subdivision regulations of physical and legal access to the lots. And as I stated earlier, right now, there is not any use proposed for lots two and three. And lot one will be a commercial storage unit facility. So the property is zoned C-RR1 residential. The density in this zoning district is one unit per one acre maximum. The minimum lot width in that zoning district is lots that are one-third its average depth. Due to the layout of the, of the proposal being flag lots, it does make it unique to meet this regulation per zoning. So staff is recommending that the, there is a condition with a setback line between the common boundary of lots one through three. Some of the uses permitted in the zoning district are residential daycare homes, agriculture and accessory buildings. The proposal was reviewed in accordance with the growth policy and the 2019 Missoula area land use element, which was an amendment to the 2016 growth policy. The 2019 Missoula area land use element does designate the subject property as residential, which aligns with the current zoning designation for the property. The land use element residential designation recommends a density of anywhere from three dwelling units per acre to 11 units per acre, which would require sewer connection. The goals of the residential land use designation is to accommodate a range of housing options that contribute to countywide housing diversity and to preserve and enhance the residential character of existing neighborhoods and to provide a transition of land uses. This intent also mirrors the existing zoning designation as well. Staff, of course, reviewed the subdivision based on the subdivision review criteria, including impacts to agriculture, agricultural water user facilities, local services, environment, wildlife and wildlife habitat and public health and safety. In reviewing the impacts to agriculture and water, the subdivision must reasonably mitigate potentially any adverse impacts. The subject property has not historically been utilized for any sort of agriculture production nor any timber production. So there are not any adverse impacts by the proposal today. The soils on the subject property that are mapped by the NRCS are soils classified as farmland of local and statewide importance. The soil survey also did not indicate any soils of prime farmland nor prime farmland if irrigated. In terms of impacts to agriculture water facilities, there were no known existing irrigation facilities on the site. There is an existing DNRC water right identified for the property. The applicant did indicate that the water right is to be utilized for lot one. So where that existing storage unit facility is for landscaping purposes, staff did include a condition of approval that would require that that water right be available for all of the proposed lot. And if the water right is to just be assigned to lot one, that it's through appropriate legal processes. As I mentioned earlier, there are not any new roadways that are proposed at this time with these subdivision. The legal and physical access are provided on Deer Creek Road through that 80-foot wide public access and utility easement for any potential future roadways that are constructed for the property. The subdivision does fall within the urban area boundaries, but the subdivision will fall under the rural standards because it meets the exceptions to the urban standards. And since the proposal is a minor subdivision, they are not required to put in any non-motorized facilities. With that being said, this map shown here was provided by the City of Missoula Parks and Recreation Program. The Parks and Recreation Department with the city made, made it known that this, that the subject property is crucial for expanding non-motorized facilities between Bonner and Missoula. The orange lines on the map indicate existing trails in the area, whereas the dashed line are potential proposed trail easements, as you can see, that go through the subject property. The city and the county are both in conversation with the property owner to discuss potentially purchasing a portion of the property for a trail easement. There's really nothing in our subdivision regulations that would require a trail easement through the property, but I did think it was key to share with you guys this conversation that is being had between the applicant and other county and city agencies. Once again, impacts in natural environment, wildlife and public health and safety were reviewed with the proposal. The subdivision site does contain some areas of slope that are 25% or greater. These areas are designated on the preliminary plat as no build zones. In terms of wildlife concerns, we did not really receive any comments from other agencies with concerns for wildlife. In the proposal, the applicant did provide the Fish Wildlife and Parks Living with Wildlife information in the proposed covenants, but really no comments of concern for wildlife since the proposed parcels are very large. Staff is recommending a number of conditions of approval with the request, as I talked about earlier, in terms of meeting that requirement with zoning and the flag lot design that's proposed. Staff is recommending that a setback line is put on the face of the plat to designate where the setback will be measured from on the lot lines. A condition of approval also requires that a revegetation plan be submitted with the final plat. This is a typical condition with most subdivisions. There is a weed management plan that has already been included in the application packet, but we do recommend that that be included in the covenants as well. In terms of the well isolation zone, there's a well proposed, a commercial well for lot one. So we included a condition that requires written approval from adjacent property owners if necessary. Staff is also recommending a condition that a no access strip be shown on the plat between the 80-foot wide easement and the northern boundary of lot one, or sorry, lot three, as you can see. We have lot one striked out there. We did make a mistake in the staff report. It should have read lot three. I do have an example of what that no access strip would look like. Staff felt that this was the best condition, that if there were new roadways to be built, that this would give us some access, so you don't have kind of three separate points where a road could be built and will allow them just one access point on to lot three and then that easement for lots two and three. A couple of other conditions to note. Staff is recommending a condition that notification should be placed in the covenants, that if any water allocation from the existing water right be equally divided between lots two and three. And in addition, that all lot owners have access to that existing water right as well. Residential fire sprinklers were proposed for fire protection for lots two and three, as lot one will be served by a cistern. So staff is recommending that that sprinkler requirement be shown on the face of the plat. And finally, just a long-term maintenance plan be submitted for that cistern for lot one, reviewed by Missoula Rural Fire. So staff is recommending approval of the subdivision based on the findings of fact and subject to the recommended conditions found in the staff report. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. So this is a public hearing. Would the applicant or applicant's representative like to speak?
Paul Forsting, Territorial Land Works. Maybe I'll start, Lauren, with the sprinklers, maybe. We had just talked over here about the sprinklers. When we started this project, we proposed residential, we proposed residential fire sprinklers for the project. And we were told that if we did that, we would have to put them in our, in our storage unit buildings that were already being constructed and permitted. And we said, well, we, storage unit buildings aren't heated. We can't, you know, it's super expensive and we can't, we're not going to heat these. And so we're not going to do sprinklers. We're going to have to pick a different option. And so we went and met with the fire chief and got a cistern approved. I just talked to Lauren here and we clarified that the regulations say you have to pick one of the three. You have to pick, you either put a hydrant in on a municipal system, you do cisterns, or you do sprinklers. And so when we filled out our application, we, we had initially indicated sprinklers. We, we, we went and changed our plan to cisterns and we left the word sprinklers in there. I just talked to Lauren here in the crowd and she said that that would be fine if we picked the one, if something changed, Lauren, over the last couple of minutes.
Yeah, and I think, Tim, do you want to maybe, I was talking with Tim a little bit about it as well. So Tim, I don't know if you have more information maybe on how we want to handle?
Yeah, and I'd just say it's completely our fault. We accidentally left it there. Now, if it's residential fire sprinklers, I would say, let's get rid of the cistern altogether and let's do residential fire sprinklers, period, as our mitigation, as the one third option. Residential fire sprinklers doesn't match what we were told. We were told we have to do commercial fire sprinklers on our commercial building. And so it, we're kind of back to the beginning where we, sprinklers is the easiest thing because you don't know what's going to go in. A cistern's very expensive. To do that as your option, it's a very expensive thing. We went and met with the, the fire chief and said, okay, well, we have to do a cistern because we can't do sprinklers in this storage building. And so we had to go pick one, a different option. And so we went and picked a cistern, designed it, met with the fire chief because it's on our plat and it's our proposed item. Yeah, and so we, you know, it's definitely our mistake that we left in the words that we were going to use sprinklers. But we fully, you know, had met with the fire chief and got approval of a cistern location.
So you're planning on a cistern?
Yes, absolutely. We, we, you pick one of three options and we picked the cistern.
Tim, is there anything you want to add to help clarify this?
Well, I guess the, Tim Worley for the record from CAPS. The question is whether, what the volume of that cistern is, whether it would cover potential future uses on lots two and three. Has it, I guess, has it been installed at this point?
Paul, come on up.
Yeah, absolutely. The, the volume of the system is defined by the regulations and we've met with the fire chief and, and the regulations say you need to do a cistern per the fire department's requirements. And so we went and met with the fire department and got approval of a system. But we still have to, I mean, the rule says, I guess, the typical, often you get a subdivision approved, even at this point, your conditions of approval still say, pick a sprinkler, pick a cistern, pick a hydrant. They usually say that. I mean, it's usually, it's often you just get that generic language and you have to still do one of the three. And, and all of it says you have to build it per fire code and you have to build it per the standards. And so I guess I don't know that there's any debating that from our standpoint.
So just to be clear, are we contemplating striking from the face of the plat residential fire sprinklers? Tim?
My assumption always was going to be that lots two and three had the potential for residential fire sprinklers if residences are built there in the future. But lot one has the cistern.
Paul, are you, are you talking cisterns, are you talking cisterns for all three lots?
No, you only have to pick one. You put one cistern in for your whole, you, you put one, you, you either, you put, you either, you know, you don't, you don't put three cisterns out there.
So what you're contemplating is adequate to service all three lots?
Absolutely. Yep, and that's what we proposed to the fire department. That's the way the subdivision regulations are.
Tim, you have?
Yeah.
Sorry. I guess my concern here is that we don't know the size of that cistern. Maybe we do. Depending on the residences that potentially could be built on lots two and three, the volume of that cistern would have to grow or you'd have to actually add other systems out there. I mean, if there's one 10,000 gallon cistern and 40 units go in on lots two and three, that 10,000 gallons is way under adequate, so.
Paul, come on up. And, and can we, can we make the language such that it's either a cistern adequate to service all three lots or residential fire sprinklers would be required on the?
Yeah, and if, I guess to Tim's point, if 40 more units are put there, they'll have to come in for their own review. And they'll be subject to a specific fire plan for that. But we did take the plan of doing a cistern for these three lots to the fire chief, Brent Christopherson. And we have correspondence to that effect in the application and said, okay, we can't do sprink, you know, we don't want to do sprinklers. What kind of cistern do we have to do here? And we got approved the location and it's, it's on Deer Creek. It's in the best location. But if there is something more dense, a 40-unit subdivision or all that, that has its own merit for review. And so, and I think that's,
So, so while they're looking at that, why don't you go ahead and let's just move past the sprinklers and,
Okay, all right.
We'll come back to it.
And that isn't our error on our part. We did put it in there and so I'm here saying, gosh, I checked the box wrong, but it, the regulations are clear that you have to pick one option and so we picked one. Other items on the, well, I was hoping to come here and say, ah, I didn't, you know, what a great staff report. We, everything in there is just the way we like it and, you know, real quick. But that's really the only item that I wanted to make sure we, we focused on. The trail and other things. Yeah, they're absolutely willing to talk about, you know, we don't have any users for the back two lots. It is a very interesting spot. I'm not sure anybody's, you know, Dave Edgell looked at a, a larger denser development for the whole site. He had a plan that he put together, not with us, but with somebody. And I, I'm not sure it penciled or, you know, at the end of the day, you've got a not very valuable land, I don't think. And it just didn't seem like a great spot for it. I'm not sure if we'll ever see a bunch of houses out there. Maybe you will. That shooting range is pretty, pretty loud. But the folks at Deer Creek enjoy their spot and they're, you know, I guess, they're, you're paying a premium for that and you're still hearing it. But this is a little bit closer there. When we have a trail that going through there, what I, what I wonder, and I think there's a lot of thinking that has to be done in there, it's a pretty remote spot, even though it's so close to the city, if you walk that property. You know, I was surprised that I didn't see more like signs of camping and such. I mean, you can tell nobody's back there. And I worry if you had a trail through there, I just think some thought would have to be that you're, you're of course going to start bringing people back in there. And so none of that has been really thought out, but I, I would suspect you would see some more folks maybe using the property. And without users out there, you know, if you have a trail, you kind of want there to be somebody watching where it's leading people if it's going onto private property. So I'm not saying good or bad, I'm just saying, hasn't been fully vetted out yet. And I would wonder, you know, would there be people camping on it and such? I, again, it's pretty remote. I mean, you could, you could do that. And so I, I think when they talk about a trail going through there, I think that's something that, at least I would be concerned about is, you know, is that trail going to be on an easement or should it actually be a parcel? And if it's a parcel, I wonder if we couldn't have a condition of approval that says, if some agreement for the sale of a trail section was agreed upon, that that could be added to the face of the final plat. Point being, we can add an easement on there without having to come back to you, but if for some reason the city wanted to buy a piece of land from us for that park? for some reason the city wanted to buy a piece of land from us for that park, that we would have to go back through subdivision to get that approved. So I was kind of just thinking outside the box, you know, maybe that would make it easier for a trail to come to agreement instead of having a trail just on an easement through somebody's property. I think most people would prefer a trail being off of their property and actually on a physical piece of property that's owned by the trail, city, county, whoever. So I'm just wondering, kind of thinking out loud on that, not trying to kind of overdo it because it sounds like it's not, there's no conditions related to it. But if, if possible, if we could have some condition in there that said we could create a park parcel for a trail without requiring re-subdivision, that's just kind of throwing it out there. I've had a lot of creative conditions come to us before that do change things like that. You know, we're required to do something and we're told we have to make a park bigger, we have to change this or that. And so I'm just wondering if we could get there with this condition where, if some type of arrangement was there that we could. Anyway, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Sure, just, thanks for being creative. And here's just a question on that, so. I'm trying to anticipate, let's say we do this and we can do it, or we have to ask attorney, I don't, I have no idea if we can. Then the time comes, let's say, the city wants to buy this parcel that we've carved off for a trail. Would the cost of that be less because we don't have, you don't have to go through a subdivision process?
Well, it certainly would come to realization a lot quicker. And I don't know if there's any entity, if there's any rule that allows you to go create a tract of land for, you could do for utilities, there's exemptions. Yeah, in theory, it would be at least less for the city. I mean, the city would probably be the responsible party for the subdivision.
That's what I'm getting at, I mean, would there, could there be a public benefit for doing this?
I think so. I absolutely think so. I think it would make it a lot easier for the applicant to create a piece of land for them to sell, you know?
John, is that even possible to kind of preemptively exempt from subdivision review what is essentially creating a new lot line at some future date during this subdivision process?
I don't know. I defer to Tim, actually.
Tim, Tim's the condition expert.
Tim, is, is this creative thinking even possible?
I have my doubts, actually, that this is possible to do because we're trying to foresee something that we don't know the details of it right now, so I'm not sure how we would write that up as a condition. I mean, if, if you would do it with an easement, like Lauren's got a condition about, that allows basically well arcs to move on the final plat a little bit if well locations change, that's a fairly standard condition, but to try to foresee a future land division and anticipate it as almost some sort of exemption from subdivision, I'm not sure how we would do that.
John, are the wheels turning or are they, they're gummed up?
No, the wheels aren't really turning, which is not unusual. I'm trying to, I'm trying to think of the, I'm trying to think of the, the exemption, subdivision exemption provision that, that we've used in the past in lieu of using the power of eminent domain. And I, I don't, I don't have that statute in front of me. I can't even think if it would be applicable here, but it would be, and it would be, it would be something that could be used to create a tract, but it would be outside of this particular subdivision process.
I wonder if we could call it a right of way, because the city takes right of way in few simple parcels, and so I wonder if we can take that easement right of way. I don't know if that will get us there, but then we could say easement or right of way. And then maybe the city could annex that piece in and it would become their property. I'm just, I'm not sure if that's exactly how it works, yeah, but just, just thinking out loud, it would just, if the city wants to actually own it, and I think that's probably what I would, if I was him selling it, I would say, I don't really want an easement, right? And I think there, we might be circling back to you or the city saying, okay, well, we need some steps to get there, so.
Unless in some, yeah, unless in some abstract way the property owner considered the City of Missoula a long distant relative, it could be a family transfer maybe, I don't know.
Family transfers.
Well, we'll, we'll have to, yeah, unfortunately, I think we're not going to be able to.
Creativity.
Point well taken, though. Paul, is there anything else you wanted to add before we loop back to the sprinklers and cistern? Okay, Lauren or Tim, do you have anything else for us there?
I guess what I would recommend is a potential condition that would allow for either sprinklers or storage or a combination of those two to be what is implemented for lots two and three. And I scribbled, it's hard to do conditions on the fly, but I tried to put something together. And if the storage that is on lot one or planned for lot one is sufficient, this wouldn't go over and above that. So the way this reads is, plans for fire suppression on lots two and three shall be reviewed and approved by Missoula Rural Fire prior to approval of each building permit. If automatic fire sprinklers are chosen for any particular structure, plans shall be submitted with the relevant building permit, subject to review and approval of Missoula Rural Fire. Plans for fire suppression water storage, if chosen, shall be reviewed for adequate volume, pressure, accessibility, and coverage, subject to review and approval by Missoula Rural Fire prior to combustible construction. These fire protection provisions shall be included in a relevant section of the covenants that shall not be amended or deleted without governing body approval. And I see that as being a substitute for, I'm not sure which condition it is, Lauren, is a condition 15 that makes the reference to putting the fire sprinkler language on the plat. We might also have to make this a substitute for the section of the covenants that make a reference to fire sprinklers. So my concern here is that lots two and three being, I think, two and three together would be 40 acres. Once this goes through subdivision, it's subdivided, it's zoned, you could have 40 residential units on lots two and three, at least in theory, through condo townhouse exemption development. That's something that we're trying to anticipate here. We don't know if that's going to happen or not. It very well may not, but I want to make sure there's adequate fire protection there. If we just have one cistern for the storage units now and then 40 residential units go in in the future on the western two-thirds of this property, it needs to have adequate fire protection.
Paul, would that work?
I just want to make sure that, I guess what we're saying is, we present and propose a cistern that we get the fire department to approve and we tell them exactly what it's for. It's for a storage unit, it's for these lots, I guess, for, right now would be for a single family, even though we're not, we're not proposing single family, that's why it's hard to even project, they just want to sell the other lots. But, yeah, we don't want a mandatory requirement that they're in sprinklers. So I think you captured it, Tim, just make very clear. And I think we've already, generally, I think we've already got that, so, yeah, that's, that's pretty good.
Okay, good work pulling that together on the fly. Holy smokes. Lauren, are we good with that? Are we going to need to amend something in the covenants also to, to mirror that? Or we could, while she's looking at that, Paul, anything else? Or the applicant, anything you want to add? John?
I really like this idea of a right of way and a trail. I mean, that's just me personally, there's a kind of a renegade trail along there that I ran on a couple of times a year for years and years. And so I love that the seed is, is there and I want to plant this seed to avoid subdivision. If you look under 76-3-201, subpart one, there is an exemption for parcels or divisions of land that create rights of way. Now, that's only for a right of way. If there's a subsequent change in the use of the land to residential, commercial, or industrial use, it's then subject to subdivision review. But we could use that, you know, we could use that rights of way or utility sites exemption in the future if, if there's some deal that struck between.
And that doesn't need to be a condition of approval or any sort of.
Right, right.
That doesn't, right.
You have an option for later that is in subdivision.
Great, thanks.
You know, for a $200 petition fee.
There you go.
That maybe the city would pay.
Well, if we can't get the family transfer approved for it, well.
Okay, thanks, John. Good, good work dredging that up. Lauren or Tim, anything else?
So there is a section of the covenants right now that does include the building permit requirements as installation be those fire sprinklers. So I suggest just striking that portion of the covenants and replacing it with the condition for future either sprinklers or storage be reviewed and approved at the time of building permits.
Okay. Anything else, Paul? Any other public comment?
No.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Any other questions? Are we ready to move into trying to restate what Lauren just said?
Can you make this all in something that's readable?
Should, do we need?
There we go.
So would we say, subject to the recommended amended conditions of approval?
Sure. Okay. I'd move, we approve the Deer Creek subdivision based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law, subject to the amended recommended conditions of approval found in the staff report.
I'll second that. And just for clarity, that will include any changes to the covenants? Yes.
That would mean we would strike section 2C of the covenants and we would replace condition number 16 with the condition I read into the record.
Okay.
Perfect.
That will be included in Josh's motion. Any further discussion? Okay, thanks everyone for hanging with us on a very long day. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're good. Thank you.
Thanks, you guys, for all the thought on the fly. Good job. Well done.
So any other business to come before the commission today? Seeing none, we'll be adjourned.